To end the closed session and return to the open meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. We're in open session.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the...
Oh, you've got something written up?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll let John...
Let through something I've written up.
Mr. Chair, I move to reject the Quavo purchase and sale agreement and to approve the donation agreement with Crown Property Management, LLC and authorize the county administrator to sign and execute the agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to thank, uh, John Van Kennel and his family for the generous donation.
Right. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, I as well want to thank, uh, the donor for coming forth and offering the property. I think that's a great deal for the taxpayers and the county budget. Also want to thank staff for going above and beyond lately, our administrator and and our consultants and sheriff and, uh, everybody that's been involved in the process. Uh, my fellow commissioners, uh, and the design team steering committee. It's it's been a lot of work for a lot of people. It hasn't been easy. Uh, and, uh, also want to thank the citizens for coming forward and, uh... Uh, and, uh, also want to thank the citizens for coming forward and, and, um, letting us know their thoughts and opinions and, and offering suggestions. So, um, yeah, that's it.
Jim?
Uh, Mr. Chair, so, um, you know, on a, I guess, I'm, I'm sure, unsure if I should be thanking anybody at this point. You know, this has been a really, uh, interesting, uh, few months, you know, having these, these, uh, discussions, these property negotiations. You know, and seeing how quickly things can change and how we can, uh, change our, our, uh, minds on, on properties. And, and so, I mean, I, I'm hopeful that this, you know, maybe all the sites selected. Um, you know, so, you know, like I mentioned, it's, it's been an interesting couple of months, you know, having these public hearings, you know, hearing from some folks and up in the, in the public. Uh, I learned a lot about, uh, some folks, um, and, and their intentions and things like that. Um, so some of this has been, you know, an eye opener. Some of this has been frustrating. Um, you know, I, I guess I learned a new term of NIMBY. You know, uh, I, I guess I wasn't really aware of that acronym. Um, prior to, you know, these, these, uh, property negotiations and things like that. And, and I think to be fair, you know, I, I guess I'm unsure, um, if I would want a jail in my backyard. But, you know, uh, talking to folks, uh, around, you know, the current location, um, they seem to not really have any problems with the jail. So, you know, there's this, there's this been a lot that has went into this. Um, I think the most frustrating thing, you know, about this is hearing, you know, some folks talk about, you know, the less fortunate, you know, the ones that, um, occupy, you know, our, our current jail. You know, the, the people of color, you know, the native community and how, how the public, uh, uh, has this perception that they're all, you know, hardened criminals that they wouldn't want walking up and down their neighborhoods, you know, which is, which is unfair to them, you know, which is, um, sad to hear. You know, folks out in our community and our neighbors, um, you know, feel this way, you know, about, um, about these folks. So, um, my hope is that with, you know, these, these crowds that showed up to these public hearings to oppose these, these, uh, properties. My hope is that they, they open their minds and, and learn a lot about the folks that, that do occupy, you know, the jail. That they're human too, you know, uh, we all make mistakes and, uh, sometimes, uh, you know, being incarcerated may be, you know, the option that, that needs to be taken to, to, uh, seek the help they, you know, may need. Um, you know, I don't know, Mr. Chair, if you remember about eight years ago or so, you know, we, we really began, you know, the process of, of really thinking about, uh, this new jail or a new jail, um, because at the time, you know, we just, uh, we're, we're patching up the current one with, you know, a Band-Aid after Band-Aid and how, uh, expensive it became. And at that time, I was really opposed to, you know, a jail. Because, um, you know, the jail roster, you know, shows, you know, anywhere between sixty and eighty percent of the native population that, that occupy the jail. So at that time I felt, oh, well, you know, I don't want to build a new jail because it's just going to be filled up with, you know, the native community. You know, as, as time went on and, and seeing that, you know, something needed to be done. And, you know, over the years I, I've kind of realized that, well, you know, maybe a new jail is something that's needed. Because the current facility doesn't have the adequate space that's needed for programming, you know, that, that's needed for, um, you know, maybe special religious, uh, ceremonies and things like that. So, you know, my hope is with the new jail that, you know, we can provide, uh, some of these, uh, programs and, and, uh, cultural, uh, things. So, um, so with that, you know, I guess I'm asking the public to, you know, maybe, you know, come out and, and, you know, help support, you know, the county and, and, and our efforts and, and trying to get this funded. So, um, so I guess, Mr. Chair, I, I think that's my, my, uh, thoughts on, on the jail process that we have, you know, been through. Thank you.
Uh, as others have said, I think we've had good support along the way. But I look at this as, uh, almost a beginning again. And we've been at this for quite some time and yet it really is a beginning. Uh, once the site is chosen, thank goodness, we've had hardworking committees working throughout this period of time to help put this together. So, um, I just, uh, I'm, I'm like you, Tim. Uh, I hope that the community now, once the site is selected, will get behind what we need to do to, uh, get this, uh, concluded and, uh, constructed. So with that, any more concerns or questions or comments? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Uh, Tom, would you, uh, in, be willing to, uh, put up on the screen or, or discuss the, uh, information, uh, concerning this purchase?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'll walk through the details of the, um, the donation agreement with the board. Uh, you're all familiar with this, but this is really for the benefit of the public and to satisfy our public disclosure of the, the agreement, uh, the, uh, the approval rather that you've just, uh, you just made. So, uh, let's get started here. Um, I won't go into detail on the site selection criteria. We've seemed to do that almost every time we meet. But for the public's benefit again, there was a site selection criteria that was defined along the way and continually used to help identify properties. Um, and these are the site selection criteria that were used. Uh, when we had originally done this work months and months ago, uh, we had a list of project locations. Um, and that, those locations have changed over time based upon some updates of information that have come along the way. Um, initially the Crown property or, um, Nine More Crown property was one that had rated, um, as of interest to the, uh, to the county staff. And we had initially reached out and, um, asked whether or not that property, like we did with so many other properties, would be available for sale. Um, at the time it was not available for sale. So, um, at that time the board had not given staff any authorization to utilize eminent domain or condemnation as a process to acquire properties. So we just moved on and continued to look for willing sellers. Um, and of course during that process, uh, we had some curveballs thrown at us. So one of the biggest ones was that, um, the Greater Bemidji Area Joint Planning Board had, uh, invoked a, a moratorium for jails to be inside of residential zoned, um, areas. And so that kind of upended, uh, a good portion of our work and required us to go back and look at those areas of zoning that the jail would be permitted to continue to move forward in. And that of course was commercial and industrial zoned areas. So we had a lot of prod, uh, property locations that were disqualified along the way. And, uh, as we revised those, uh, scores and, uh, removed those ineligible, uh, property locations. This is what the site selection criteria, um, essentially spit out in regards to, uh, recommendations. And as you'll see here, uh, the first ranked project and ranking is on the right, uh, the site number is on the left. Some people get that confused. They think that the, the number on the left is the ranking. That's not, the ranking is on the right. Uh, but if you look at site number fifteen, it ranked number one. That was the brick property. That was not for sale. And so, uh, we did not pursue that, um, although we did pursue it a few times, uh, we were told repeatedly it was not for sale. So, um, if you go to the second ranked site, that happens to be site number ten, the Nine More Crown property site. And that is the one that you've just agreed to. Um, as I mentioned before, that wasn't available, but recent events, um, have allowed for the owner to essentially donate the property to the county, uh, which is a huge savings to the county. I, I would venture to say originally in our budget, we were looking at anywhere from about five hundred thousand to on the order of about two million dollars to acquire a property when we first set out. Um, that doesn't include the cost that it would take to get the property development ready or construction ready. Things like bringing utilities in or clearing and grading the, the site. Uh, or, um, removing trees or any other sorts of things, like any abatements of that sort of stuff, removing structures. So, um, the fact that this donation has come in and almost at perfect timing, well, really at perfect timing has allowed the county to save considerably because, um, that was, those dollars that we would have outright spent to acquire the property actually, um, we're saving even more so since we're not having to finance them. So that's really huge for the county and, uh, very, very grateful, uh, to Mr. Van Kennel and his, his, his company and his family for the donation as well. Um, so let's talk about what exactly is, uh, the property and whether the details around the property. This is the location map of the Nine More Crown property. Um, and we'll take a little bit closer look. It's sort of southeastern, um, uh, city of Bemidji Limits. Uh, it is located in an industrial two zoning. So it's general, uh, industrial. And, uh, here's what the property looks like. It has two entrances actually, which are very beneficial to the county. Um, one located on Railroad Street Southeast, but the, the primary frontage is on Pioneer Street Southeast. As I mentioned to you before, it's the second ranked, uh, site. It's about nine point two total acres, all usable, very flat, uh, very few trees, level. As I mentioned, uh, no structures and it's upland, no shoreline, uh, issues or any of those kinds of things. Great access to the highway and town and, uh, water and sewer utilities are in the street, not only on the south side, but they also run up the very western side of the property as well. So you have two sides of the property that's fronted by water and sewer utilities. Both, we believe of adequate size and capacity and depth to serve the property. Uh, we did do the community impact analysis. This has been shared before, uh, last week with the public hearing. And, uh, um, as we had revised the site selection criteria to include an analysis that went out a thousand feet. Uh, you see that we pick up a few more properties, um, in all of the analysis. Here we have about forty-five residential units. Uh, not necessarily properties because there is a trailer park that counts as one property, but has multiple units on it. So we included them as multiple units and that's why the numbers move a bit higher than just the number of properties. Um, and that was factored into the, uh, selection criteria rating and ranking. Uh, then you can see a number of, uh, you know, other types of parcels that are sort of encapsulated within that thousand foot proximity. Uh, finally, when we get to the, um, you know, we, we call it a purchase agreement, but it's really a no purchase agreement. It's a donation agreement. So the cost to the county, as we've said, is zero, uh, which is fantastic. Uh, the anticipated transfer, meaning when we actually take possession of the property is thirty days after our due diligence period is expired, um, unless, uh, we want to close a little bit early. The contingencies that are included inside the, uh, the donation agreement include a ninety day due diligence, uh, period by the county. We certainly want to do our due diligence and make sure that as generous as this donation has been, that we're not accepting a property that doesn't work for some reason, that there's some sort of unforeseen issue with the property. Maybe we don't anticipate this, but you know, if there was to be something that kept the property from being utilized as a jail, we wouldn't want to take the property on. So that's why we're going to be continuing to do our due diligence as we have done with other properties that we've been interested in. Um, the, um, there's also a clause in there that the property has, has to be used for jail, can't be used for anything else. Um, and that we have to break ground on the jail within five years, uh, from when we, we, when we, uh, close on this, uh, agreements. There is a reversion clause and that reversion clause, um, addresses, uh, a couple of things. First it addresses is the county's due diligence findings. So in the event that the county finds something and decides that this isn't the right site or it can't work or something like that, uh, we will actually return the property to, um, uh, to the benefactor. As well, uh, if we fail to construct within five years or use the property, um, then also there is the reversion would kick in. And then there is a first right of refusal, uh, as well in case, uh, we want to sell it for some reason. Um, we have asked the owner's assistance with applications and permits, um, and that would be of course at our expense just as we'll be helping the applicant in regards to helping him, uh, through the donation process as well. So those are the highlights of the purchase agreement, which again is a donation agreement in this case. And I'll stand for any questions that you might have.
Any questions that we have for Tom? Okay.
Great. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. And we have a motion to adjourn.
Oh.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Congratulations. So moved.
Good morning.